All right, I've got 7-701, so I believe we'll get started.
Good.
Call the Planning and Zoning March 26, 2024 session to order. If you can stand for the President of the House, please.
My pleasure, the agents to the flag of the United States of America, an ancient republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's, if we could take roll call, we'll start at my right here. Eric Lukingville, member.
Paula Johnson, alternate.
Eric Myers, Vice Chair.
Bob Labatt, member.
Gernan Shaheenan, member.
Meg Bailey, alternate.
And on Zoom, that would be Steve Muller.
Are you there, Steve?
He's there.
He's unmuted.
Give him a minute.
It looks like it's audio, or he's connecting to audio.
Okay.
We'll give him a minute.
Just for note, we ceded two alternates tonight for Lockwood and Chinny, who are absent tonight. Wait for Steve.
I'm here.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
All right, I am going to open up the public session. Public session is for items of discussion from the public that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to address the commission? Start in the room. Seeing none, anybody on Zoom have a comment for the commission? All right, hearing none, I'm going to close the public session. I'd like to take action on the minutes of March 12, 2024. I took a look, they seemed in line for me.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
On a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
Abstain. We have two abstentions. Okay, we're going to move on to the continuation of the public hearing. Since we've already opened the public hearing, I do not believe you need to read the notice correct. So I'll open up by noting that I've read through the package of the applicant, and there have been a lot of questions that have been presented over the last two public hearings, and the Abby has done a nice job listing out most of the key items that we've been discussing, and there's been some dialogue that's apparent between Abby's office and the applicant. And should we invite the applicant to discuss? Why don't you come on up and introduce yourself again and talk us through some of the work you've done with Abby?
John Khan, 563 Sandbrook Street, Rambi, Connecticut. We are back and forth on the questions that were open-ended, I had action items from the last meeting. We also continue the wood cleanup in the rear of the property as discussed. So the last two weeks, half of the logs have been removed. And then, so I believe we're going to be discussing the answers to those questions today.
Yeah, dig right in.
Okay. Two seconds.
If you need a paper copy, we can.
I'll get ready. Okay, so, questions number one. Yep, presented the DB reading of the equipment as specified, which is a lawnmower engine and.
Well, so we'll start, so you're missing, so the proposed, the first item for discussion was the timing, proposed conditions, outdoor woodworking activity, which was included and limited to milling, cutting, et cetera. There was a suggestion of limiting the hours when it occurs from 11 to 2, and possibly limiting the duration. And your response was limited to the hours of 10 to 5, so you had asked for additional time, and seven hours in duration per day was your.
Yeah, I mean, that's not typical, but 10 to 5 is your operating hours, so if I have the time to go before lunch, I'll go before lunch and mill if I need to, or after. So I was just basically having a window of working hours.
Okay.
It's not, you know, it says me, so when I have time, I can go and mill. And 11 to 2 is pretty typical, and that's what I said at the last hearing. That's usually when I have a little bit of time.
Are you doing any milling inside the building? Or is this all?
We do planting and sanding and milling.
Planning and sanding, not milling.
We have a ban sub vertical, heavy milling inside, for small pieces.
But. You said it was limited to the size of the belt.
Correct, correct.
Pieces of weight.
If it's too big, we have to do it outside.
Yeah, the inventory out back is all large diameter logs, so you must be sawing all those outside, then.
Big ones, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'll, you know, I think we should probably take the conditions and the feedback one at a time, so we can work through them and.
What was it, how many hours a week had you said in the last?
It's averaged, since I purchased the mill in June 18th, it averaged four hours a month. I haven't milled on site in like a month and a half, it's currently in Windsor. I have a four acre lot in Windsor where I mill. So it's, you know, it's, we're a custom milling shop, you know, it's not like a Home Depot supplier, you know, so we mill live edge tabletops. If I need to do a black walnut log, we'll get a walnut log on there and go through it. It's a, it's a custom woodworking business, so.
Well, that, I don't understand, you have this large volume of logs there, but you're only milling four hours and.
Yep, yep.
So you have all these logs, but you're not doing any milling, so.
No, no, I'm milling, I mill a lot offsite. Well, it depends, so, yeah, I don't mill a lot. I got 110 hours on my machine. I mean, you know, so you don't have to mill a lot to have live edge lumber. I told you that those red oak logs I got back there, half of those were, no, the big stack I have was brought in because they were doing a land clearing job on the right of way. And they're like, do you want our red oak? I said, absolutely. So that, that's where they brought the logs, and now I'm bringing them offsite. So I have half of them cleaned up, that's not typical, I don't sell firewood, we don't process firewood there. So those were just stored there, and then we're bringing them offsite. In terms of like our, once that's like cleaned up, our day, our regular operation is not high volume, it can't be one guy, I can only do so much, so, you know, three hours, and if it gets nice out, we will do, we'll mill more when it's nice out, but that's the average. So it's not, you know, you can drive by and see, you know, it's not something that we're running every day commercially.
I was up there this past week, I thought I saw a firewood processor in the back as well.
For sale.
For sale.
Yep. Yep, we sell splitters and processors. That's correct.
So I have just, there's just a few observations on the proposed condition and the response, and trying to reach an accommodation here. I think what you've written in your response here is that you've stated to us that you mill very little, four hours a month possibly, maybe more, maybe less, but yet you want to be able to mill basically your entire hours of operation. I believe what we are suggesting is that that piece of property, your site, is probably not suitable for milling on that type of basis, so if you want to suggest a very limited window in which you can do it on the property, we might be agreeable to allowing it. But I'm, you're asking to mill all day in a way this application would be written, you could be allowed to mill all day, and that's not going to happen on that site.
Okay, so you're saying limit the duration in terms of like hours per week or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, understood, okay.
Yeah, that you would mill between, only in a designated window.
Yeah.
And only for a short duration, like an hour a day.
On the basis of sound?
Well, you're, you're in a.
Or on the.
Yeah, you're in an area that may not be deemed, you know, suitable to running a full-scale sawmill operation. You do have some residences near you.
Yeah.
I believe there's probably some windows of operation that could be taught.
Understood.
To those.
Understood.
And 5 o'clock wouldn't be that.
So that, you know, this is, I guess my, the way I look at it is, it's not a full-scale operation, obviously, because I don't have 20 employees running a mill. I'm, it's fine to limit, I completely understand that's, that is a fair request.
Yeah.
And if we're running a scag hurricane leaf blower, which is twice as loud.
There's no question.
Right?
Yeah. Again.
You know, that is out loud.
I'm just trying to reconcile what you've told us you want to do on the property.
Yeah, yeah.
And what you've asked for. They are two totally different things, so ask for what you want, not.
Oh, I understood.
Not to mill all day. You're asking to mill all day, six days a week.
That's, I'm asking for the freedom to mill during our hours, not that I will mill during our hours.
We don't have any ability to give you that, you know, to limit your hours of operation, but tell you, you can do it for what you've asked for is 10 to 5, seven hours per day. Seven hours in duration per day, limited to 10 to 5.
Right.
Which you've asked for is not what you're telling us you want, and the meeting have not said what you want.
And you have to understand that what we approve, what you're asking, what we approve, it runs with the land.
Understood.
So the next person that comes along, you may tell us, oh, we're, I'm just going to do two hours a day, and that's great, but if we say, yes, you can do it from 10 to 5, and no, put it in a specific hours amount of time, the next guy can come in and say, well, look, you approved it, we can do it.
Understood, yeah.
Any of the other commission?
Yeah.
Again, the way it's written, I'm just keying on, seven hours in duration per day.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, that's not what the property was owned for, actually.
No, it's not.
For an industrial activity. It's a commercial retail business, and then.
Exactly.
Your originally, your original approval was for milling inside the building, and now you're asking for 42 hours, seven times six, yeah, outside the building, which is that something that, you know, I'm not going to vote for, you know, I can't.
Yeah, no, understood, yeah, and it's not, I didn't ask for permission to mill inside the building in the beginning. At the first meeting, we discussed, you know, is there outdoor milling operations? And yes, there was, and I answered that. I understand the, I understand the issue with like, it goes with the property, I understand that. And there's no way to tie that with like the business, right? There's no way to segregate that type of special permit? Is there, is there no?
No.
Opportunity to tie it with?
When it's approved, it runs with the property.
Not with the, okay, there's no way to segregate that at all?
And if they keep using it, they can be doing it 100 years from now.
Understood, yeah, understood.
So.
Go ahead.
So I'm hearing that you want all those hours because you need flexibility. Oh, an hour, open up, I'm going to run out, I'm going to eat my lunch, and then I'm in a mill for 30 minutes. So I see, but I agree, it's, there's a discrepancy in the way it's written versus the way you're talking about it. And I also know it's hard because you are working in the gaps, which is difficult, but I wonder if you could do like 1 to 2 on these days, like if you could.
Yeah, or the duration, just have a duration limit with, with the flex and flexibility, right, on when we could do it, when we're open.
I think the flexibility equals more hours, though, doesn't it?
Well, you can, you could say we're approving three hours, just pulling a number out of the air, and the three hours have to be done sometime between 10 to 5.
Yeah, or like 10 to 4 or something, right, right, right.
Yeah, I mean, I understand.
That's, that's a.
Last meeting, you said you worry about the rain, too, because you can't do it if it's pouring rain, so it's the next day. Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Lots of businesses don't run in the rain.
Mr. Chair.
More specificity.
I got a slightly different concern.
Okay.
I put myself in the position of one of the neighbors or one of the other businesses that's nearby. If the milling starts, then it's noisy and kind of annoying, maybe not terribly annoying, but kind of annoying. If I'm a neighbor, I want to know, when is it going to stop? So if, if he's got a lot of stuff to do, and he wants to go for seven hours, it seems to me, under his proposal, I got no remedy at all. I just have to sit there and listen to it. If there's going to be something, I think it should be extremely limited, and it should not be flexible.
I agree.
But bear in mind, as our staff noted, this special permit is for specific activities. It does not permit the operation of a sawmill.
Agreed.
And what we're looking at here is basically an operation of the sawmill. The applicant himself has stated, we will operate a sawmill. If we want to sell bag firewood in front of my store or the antique store, we will.
You just said you didn't work on.
Right, so.
I don't know.
No, but if we, if you put line out of eight, that goes against everything we've discussed in the last two meetings. I told you we need to resaw mantles in live edge labs, and you, if you put that, then I'll get a cease and desist letter and say, I thought we just discussed this, we could mill, right, during these whatever hours in duration. So if you put that, then it's contradictory, right? I mean.
I believe what we're trying to do is help you, if you could figure out a business plan or a way to, as what might have been suggested by staff, maybe you can saw between the hours of 11 and 2, and for a duration of, I've heard several hour combinations, but for an hour, you, that's it, you get an hour. Once you start between 11, it has to be between 11 and 2, and to Eric's point, you get an hour, and then it's got to stop for the day, then you can pick it back up the next day. If you're resawing an occasional mantle or a slab, again, you've said even tonight, you're running your full-scale sawmill on a four acre property somewhere offsite, and that's fantastic. It's probably suitable for the use, I assume, you can be loud and you can run your sawmill, you just can't do it here.
It's not.
So my, my advice is if you are looking for us to approve something to help you.
Yep.
Help us by putting a proposal that for the use you're looking for is extremely limited.
Right, the best time of day, okay, the best time of day and best duration.
And the duration needs to be short. Three hours, I've heard, on the, that's too long. An hour is something I have in my mind, but.
Also need to make sure it's the enforcement, because I think enforcement is one of our most difficult things. So if we gave you this huge span of time and said, well, you can do it for an hour anytime, there's no way that our enforcement officer is going to, or if somebody comes in place, you're going to be able to figure out. But if we know it's between 11 and 2, and you're going to do it for an hour and a half, or two hours, or an hour, that's easy to enforce, it's easy for you to understand, and I think for the neighbors to understand.
And there's a little flexibility, at least there, because within three hours, you could flip an active, you know, another work-related thing around.
All right, well, I think we've given you a bunch to work on, to think about, and maybe find a number two, which all our outdoor woodworking activity is to occur in the rear of the building as shown in the approved site plan. I don't.
They don't have a approved site plan, so they'll do it.
So that's in, should have been a large roll.
Oh, I didn't see the roll.
I missed the roll, too.
Oh.
We can share, we can share.
I can pass one down, too.
Share.
Do you mind putting?
You guys, do you want first?
I'll look on.
One of you guys shared, and they reshared, how about that? We're going to pass this one to you and Eric, and we're going to share.
Okay.
Perfect.
So the outdoor woodworking activity is shown to the rear of the building in the box that's kind of dotted line, parking spaces, not striped, outdoor woodworking area within that, within that space.
I think we should, too. Yeah, yeah.
We would have to extend the hearing date, and we're going to fit it in.
This is really good.
Yeah, I was over there, and I was totally confused, just where everything would go.
Okay. So there's some discussion taking place here, this new site plan is much better, thank you, but I do believe that there's a couple of items here that I was going to bring up, when we get to them, maybe we can speak to them. Abby, I think the commission needs to visit the site after we finish tonight's discussion, and we can talk about what that means for the applicant and possible extension and whatnot, but I believe it's going to be easier for everybody to understand the lay of the property and what it looks like. Also, there was some responses that we're going to get to about height of outdoor storage materials, including logs and whatnot, and there was a discussion about fence height being eight feet, and the applicant wanted 12 feet of storage, so something above the, above the height of the fence, and I just think for us, it would, it's more than the fence and the pile, it's what's behind, so what visual.
Yeah, we have a picture of that.
Yeah, but in, you know, in person does a lot, and there's one item on here that was asked about the DB level of the equipment that's running being 84 DBs. I'd want to be onsite and hear the machine full, full running with a DB meter in hand. I believe the zoning enforcement officer has one, correct? So I believe we could accomplish, we could work to create a list of things that the commission would want to look at on site, the layout, the fencing, proposed fencing plan, there was some debate in here about burn, burn height, burn location versus fence location, the noise of the machinery. I really think that we're headed to a site visit. Commission, would there be a willingness to visit the site?
Yes.
Would there be a willingness on behalf of the applicant to host a site visit and run the machinery?
Yeah, I'm going to talk to my attorney, and then we can, we can, I'll get back to on that.
Okay. All right, well, then, let's, let's.
The other thing is the applicant would have to extend.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll, we'll finish up the discussion, so we have good discussion on all the items, because in order for us to have a site visit and agree to have additional discussions, you will also have to agree to extend the meeting. It's always up to the applicant if they want to extend the public hearing and meeting, which allows us to engage in further discussion or close it, keeping in mind that if we, if at one, any point during the meeting, you choose to end the public comment and discussion and enter no additional information, we will have to make decisions based on the information that's presented at the time.
Yeah, no, I think it's reasonable to continue.
Yeah.
You know, the public session.
Yeah, but let's, let's finish the discussion, so we have as much information as possible for follow-up items for us all.
Okay.
All right, so we have the site plan, we've discussed the site plan, we've discussed a desire to have a visit, so we'll move on to number three. The five outdoor storage areas are also on the site plan. Are there any questions from the commission for the applicant about the locations of the proposed storage areas?
I don't have any questions. The reason I don't have any is because without actually being out there and figuring out where these areas are, I don't know whether they really work all that well or not. Maybe they do, I just don't know.
Well, again, we'll have to, we'll have to have a discussion about whether we'll continue and have a, have a site visit. All right, moving on to the item number four, the height of the materials stored in the five areas can't exceed, there was a recommendation for a feet, and the limited to the logs, semi-finished products, and your applicant's response was you were looking for a limit of 12 feet. And.
Yeah, that's not a strict, I mean, we could change the height. It says some logs are five feet in diameter or so, two logs are 10 feet. I, that, you know, that's not hard set in stone, that's something that number I threw out there, easily modified, no problem.
Okay.
It could be four feet, it could, you know, some logs are four feet, I mean, it's got to be something like, at a minimum, five feet, you know, that's not a problem.
I guess the comment from the, from, from staff, I think succinctly states it nicely that I don't think the stored material should be higher than the fencing that's designed to conceal the materials.
Understood.
Any other advice?
Makes sense.
Makes sense.
Understood.
So when we get to the point of writing an application, we'll probably state as much.
Okay, understood.
Materials not to exceed fence height.
Okay.
And then we'll have to get to the fencing specifications later on in the discussion All right, so there was, item number five is the two temporary outdoor storage structures that you are asking for, and we have had some previous discussion about possibly granting these temp, these structures on a temporary basis, including a date. We have granted temporary storage at a, during a recent application for another applicant in town. We gave them a, a time at which they could have that temporary storage, and at which time it could be removed, or the applicant could come back before us and ask for an extension. I, I believe the intent of that we did for them, no two applications are the same, so we don't have to draw parallels, but I would state that we gave them six months, I believe, Abby, is that correct?
Yes.
And we invited them to come back and ask for more. I don't believe 2029 would be something I would be willing to approve for the temporary structures, but if we were to do, say, a year, and encourage you to come back and ask for an additional extension if you needed it, if you weren't prepared to put a more permanent structure on the property or whatnot, I'm sure we would listen. But again, giving you some feedback, and I'll ask the other commissioners, I don't know that I would be prepared to approve these two temporary storage TARP-type hoop structures till 2029. Any other commissioner comment?
What is the material, to clarify? Is it TARP hoop?
I think there's a picture, it's like a tarpulene, it's a green Shelter Logic cartwork.
Oh.
They're, they're green.
Yeah.
It's made by a company called Shelter Logic, they're pretty popular. I think it's a, it's like a, it's like a green vinyl-type material. I think it's like a vinyl-type material.
The problem I have with the year is we gave the other applicant six months, that seemed to work. The problem we do is every time we adjust it upwards, we create a different precedent, the next applicant will say, well, you gave him a year, I want 18 months or two. So I'm for sticking with six months unless I hear some reasoned argument that that just can't work, won't work, or there's something wrong with it.
Six months with options to renew, like we didn't.
Yeah, anybody's, they, everybody has the option to come in and say, I just need more time, you know, my, my truck broke down, or whatever, you know. I, we would always be open to an extension, but I would say six months sounds okay to me, but, just one commissioner.
Probably a little time.
Five years, five years is too long.
I'd probably say a year, because the other one was for the ice cream, correct? And we knew he was moving it somewhere else.
It was a very specific advocate.
This specific thing is because he needs the time to be able, I think, afford to put in this construction, so I would go with a year, and then he can come back.
Fair point, I'm not going to die on that hill.
That's good.
Any other comments for the applicant?
Yeah, I think six months would be short for what he's looking for, and I think six months was very sensitive, being the center of town, that was our biggest concern right there, so. He's definitely further back and behind the building, so.
So you've heard the feedback, I think we'd be open to a duration that's shorter. Right. Item number six, all equipment and finished product displays limited to the area showed on the approved plan. This, again, without reading the rest, I think it would be better for us to walk the property and see the area where it's designated. I, I will share that over, it was either Friday or Saturday, I remember, I did visit the property again, I've been there several times as we've been meeting on this, and I, I have a decent representation of where I believe you want to have this area, but I also noted that in your front parking spots, at least at the time I visited, street side, you had heavy equipment parked in them. So it was outside of the designated area. I'm not saying there's a designated area today, but, but there were some big pieces of equipment, street side, in the, in the parking spaces, not in the proposed designated area. So I don't know, I believe in the proposal, it, we would agree that there would be a designated area, which would be limited to, you know, the number of pieces you could put in there, more if they're smaller, or less if they're bigger, but the rest's got to go in the back.
Understood.
Yeah. I think two, there were log trailers, is what I believe, at least one of the items I remember being parked right up front. So those would go in, under, under this proposal, would be in the back.
Right, as a display storage area in the rear, yep.
Right, according to the map, right.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, so if you go back to the map, like the, the ideal idea would be have it into the rear, the rear display area.
Sure.
And that'd be nice.
Yeah.
That'd be really nice.
I guess the, the point I'm trying to make is, in, in keeping with the application, even though it's, we're not through with it, and it's not written, so to speak, and enforced, it would, it would be nice to start to see movement towards the proposed state and.
We can do that. So as, as we get these logs out of there, we'll be able to move stuff in the back and kind of organize it, so you get maybe a visual of what we're envisioning.
Exactly, it would give us a representation. Exactly, it would give us a representation of what the lot's really going to look like.
That's fair.
Even if it needs sprucing, getting it moved in that direction, I think says a lot.
That's no problem.
About the application.
We can do that.
All right, number seven, there's to be no outdoor activity in the front of the building, I don't believe you intend to have outdoor activity in the front of the building, so that would likely be a condition of the permit.
I'm fine with the concept, but I'm wondering if we need a better definition than occasional, because somebody's idea of occasional may differ from ours.
I'm sure we can tighten up the language.
Every 10 minutes.
You don't want it to be an Amazon warehouse.
No, that's right. All right, Eric, this next item is one that you've started to comment on, but the special permit is for the specific activities outlined above and does not permit the operation of a sawmill, lumberyard, storage of stumps, log, stockpiling, storage of wood chips, sale or processing of firewood, any other you just not specifically outlining in the permit. Your response, I do not agree. This is contrary to the entire process I have just gone through, we'll operate a sawmill, if we want to sell bagged firewood in front of my store, we are storing live edge slabs and lumber.
Yeah, I took that personally. I mean, I read eight pages of this and I'm like, what? Are you kidding? I mean, what do you know, we're not mass firewood, you come by the shop, you can see that, you know, and then, you're kidding me?
Yeah. But I will state that at least in one of the previous meetings, you were asked the question, and I think in open and honest way about do you intend to sell firewood here, and your answer was no.
No, we don't sell firewood.
But.
What if we want to buy back firewood from the antique store?
Then say that, I guess is.
Oh, understood.
Right?
Well, yeah, this brought it up, this brought, this brought it up, like we were banning you, you can never sell firewood. Whoa, whoa, what do you mean?
So like, again.
How many boxes are you going to make around my business?
Understood, but the commission is only, again, responding to your previous comments, and you said you didn't have an intention.
Correct.
Last time to do firewood.
Correct, 100%.
So we wrote it as a rule.
100%.
And your response is now you'd like to sell the bagged.
No, 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 no.
And that's fine, and that's, I guess what I'm saying is, we might be agreeable to that.
No, understood, I completely understand, I just wanted to clarify, there's a limit between being, coming to the zone and telling you what I do for a business, what my intentions are, and will we do what I've been doing for seven years.
Yeah.
There's also a line between overreach and discriminatory action against my business, for whatever reason, okay? And so I read, this is my third meeting, I've done everything you asked for, I come here, read the line eight, oh, I'm going to get in trouble if I agree to that, you can send the enforcement officer out on Monday and say like, oh, there's a piece of firewood on that, you know, log splitter from, from the customer, that, you know, split piece, it's fine.
Yeah.
That's not fair, but I paid my dues, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a business owner, I pay my insurance, I pay my taxes, I do the right thing, I'm here at zoning, despite any discriminatory actions from my neighbors that actually don't like me because of some history of the other property that I own that we can get into, that's not right. That's not right. You know, you understand what I mean? So everything with, you know, I'm a reasonable person, I speak English, we can have conversations, we can put anything we need, that's fair, right? Not a Home Depot, not a Lowe's, when we get to that site, we'll move. You know what I mean, I understand, I completely understand.
I do.
You know, so that's, that's actually insulting.
Yes, so I guess the way I'd like to approach that is, is again, the commission has offered to you numerous times, and I believe we're trying to, it may not feel that way, but we're trying to help you reach an accommodation that we believe allows you to operate in this particular zone.
I appreciate that.
A lot of what you're asking for is difficult to do in the zone you've asked for. So when you make a comment about not wanting to do something and we put it in the permit, if you change your mind, it's a great opportunity to have a discussion in a non-confrontational way so that we can help you. I think I would be agreeable to you selling a bagged firewood product, much like you see at Geisler's on the way out when you pick up the package, but that's not what you've asked for in the previous discussions. In fact, you said the exact opposite, no firewood. So again, this permit, because it carries with the land and because it's dabbling on opening up things in this zone that need to be tightly controlled, we're just asking for you to work with us and maybe, understand you've been here a few times now, but maybe with this round of discussion, you can actually sit down with Abby and the building department there and come up with a proposal that gets you what you need, puts in the necessary controls in place so that you can operate in that zone and everybody can be happy, us, you, your neighbors.
Antique store.
Antique store, all of those types of things. So again, as you go back, if you're going to agree to go back, which I would hope that you would do, to have discussions, be open and broad-minded about what it is you want and try to work out an accommodation that works for you and for us.
Okay.
All right? Including the selling of the bagged firewood, have no issue with that?
Understood.
Yeah. What? No, of course not, but again, it's not what you asked for, so, you know, ask for it and we'll talk about it. I believe what the commission has the fear of is you running a full sale cordwood operation out of it.
Understood.
And that's not, I don't believe.
Yeah, that's fine.
Something would be said.
Yeah, agreed, agreed.
All right?
That could be stated, I mean, that's, that's okay.
And that's what we thought.
You said no firewood, what do you mean? Whoa, 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 you know, like.
Again, because we, we weren't thinking about the, the bagged firewood solution, so now we, now we understand, so now, now we can craft a set of rules around firewood that I think would make you be able to do that.
Fine, yeah, agree with that, that's reasonable.
Yeah.
I just read that, I'm like, you can't tell me, you know.
So maybe you go back and think about.
And how about the definition of lumber? That's one thing I wanted to ask. So, you know, you say you can't throw lumber, well, live edge slabs are considered lumber.
Yeah.
It's a wood product. So, so, you know, how do we word that, where it's a craft lumber thing and not a high yield or, I don't know how you're going to, you know, word that.
Yeah.
That's one thing I wanted to ask.
So you display your slabs outside for sale, right?
Yeah.
In the display areas, right?
And then you store your lumber inside or in the, or in the temporary outdoor?
It gets brought inside to get processed and then stored. Yeah, once it's killed, you have to store it, yeah.
Because you don't really want to store it outside, do you?
No, it air dries for like, maybe, you know, a week or so, but most of the stuff is done offsite and then brought in and then brought inside, so, but, but this wood product, so it is considered lumber. And that's 100% what you're going to consider it, right?
We do, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I think that we can, we can come up with some better wording on that. I believe the intent in reading that is to not be a dimensional lumberyard that's selling two by, two by fours and two by tens and that sort of thing. I think that's what we're trying to.
Industrial, yeah.
I'm sure there's a way we can work through that, Abby.
Probably lumber.
Yeah. Limiting, understanding your, your lumber is live edge slabs, maybe we're a little bit more specific in that, with, with plenty of variation for mantel slabs that doesn't have you selling framing lumber for.
Yeah, well, you can't build with, with rough sawn two by fours anyways, not approved building, so.
I'm confident we can work through that and make.
If you go lumber, that's not, I would get in trouble with that.
He's, I mean, he's allowed to sell lumber inside of his store, right?
Yes.
I mean, there's no, nothing would ever prevent him from doing that, right?
As long as it's inside the store.
As long as it's inside the store, yeah.
Yeah, understood, understood, yeah. But I mean, part of that, part of that process though is to have like lumber outside, right? That's.
Display, right.
That's what I mean, yeah.
All right, I'm confident we can work through this item here. If we've beaten number eight, let's move on to number nine, any changes to the above conditions require special, that's normal. If, once we reach an agreement on the special permit for the application, you understand that anything that you want to change in the future, you're welcome to come back.
Of course, including the building and all that, that's right.
Anything that would require site plan modification or modification of the special permit, additions to your building may not, might not, those might just go through the standard building process. As long as you meet your setbacks.
Right.
Then you'd have.
Which actually might be an option.
Then you might, then you would just have to go to ZBA.
Yeah.
Not necessarily, yes. Which might be, right, Abby?
I'm sorry.
If he wants to put an addition on the building, that typically would be done through the building process and if he needs to violate a setback, that would be ZBA, I don't think he would need to come back before us.
He would for site plan approval.
Even with the addition to the building?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Well, if you had an approved building from the building office as well as ZBA in place, I'm sure you could get a site plan approval for a nice permanent structure that replaced your two temporary.
Or lectures, or an additional garage or two for the, that's right.
Yeah, sure. All right, there were some additional questions, we've already covered the decibel level for the equipment, I believe that we could take care of that in a site visit again if you're willing. And then there was some discussion about the berm and the fencing, where it would be, its height, I again think that that could be looked at during a site visit.
Eric, I have a question about that. Why do you put a berm in if you're putting a fence in? Usually we do berms and trees as a fencing. You don't usually do a fence and then a berm, what is the berm?
That's exactly what you said, fence ends and then the berm ends. It wasn't a double.
Oh, I see. Okay, I was hitting this, but it would make any sense.
Again, walking the property I think would help there because there was a comment from staff that the, where the fencing starts and berms start and where they end needed to be cleared up on this site plan, they weren't as detailed as they needed to be. So I'm sure that's an easy, easy thing to do, and especially if we can see it, make some recommendations. You clarified the type of fence, which is complete full stockade, which I think is agreeable to the board in most cases, right? Any comment?
What you say, stockade, you're talking wood, plastic?
One by, like, one by 12, wood.
Okay.
Yeah. Probably like eastern white pine with a, with a stain.
Okay.
This is really pretty.
You answered a question about when we reach agreement on the fence and the berm, you would get those installed in under six months?
Yes.
That's a great answer, thank you for that. Clarification of storage items, see condition four, would there be anything else outside beyond everything that we've been talking about today, logs, slabs, equipment for sale? Is there anything else?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
Can I go back to question two?
Oh, of course.
Yeah, there was the last, next to the last sentence is, will there be plantings on the berm? I would, I personally would suggest that that would be a good idea to ask, plantings on the berm.
Could, that's not, that's not a big deal.
Like pine?
Yeah, like, no, it's fine, yeah, it grows in, that's, I mean, it's not a big deal. I spoke to that neighbor, you know, behind and we walked the property line and everything, and he was very happy, you know, he said that'd be great, help cut down on the road noise, because the road noise travels from the concrete entrance where all the trucks exit, right back to his yard. So I said with the stockade fence at the display area up front and then the rear berm, that's two barriers between the road and him, you know, through, through that corridor of my property. So that, that's actually going to cut down a lot of noise from the road as well, just overall, so it was a pretty interesting conversation.
Eric, you good?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you, thank you for your answer.
All right, number six, the height of the temporary storage, you've asked, you've answered the question, you believe those.
It's a kit, that's.
It's a kit, Eric, 12 feet.
Yeah.
They're, they're an R, so at their highest spot, they're 12 feet.
That's right.
Excess material, again, there was some discussion about stumps and bio debris and other things like that, and a question about the site plan, if, between now and we do a site visit, if we could be more clear about where that's going to be and maybe we could, you know, see where it's going to be on the site, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, and it's like the stump removal and stuff is just for the property cleanup, not, not the normal operation of the business.
Good, we had some discussion.
Yeah, that's fine, that's agreeable, I agree with what you said in the no stumps, that's agreeable.
Yeah, and that would be good. All right, well, I think we're through, we've talked about, there's some pictures about the fence, we can, we'll get some clarity on that. Before we open it up for some public comment, if there is any, does the commission have anything else for now? Well, we're, we're going to get back with the applicant after public comment. I've been, actually, if I have been remiss, Commissioner Mueller, do you have anything to add? I've called you out.
I do not, you guys have done a fantastic job.
All right, all right.
That's not too much.
All right. Thank you. So we'll give you just a slight reprieve for a moment here and we'll open it up. Is there anybody in the room that would like to approach the, have a discussion with the board about this proposal? If you'd introduce yourself, please, your name and address and.
Okay. My name is Jeff Salinardi, 17 East Street. The first thing I wanted to address is that as a concerned neighbor, I don't necessarily have a problem with any bit of the operation of the, of the applicant. I think what he's doing is, is a good thing for the area, it, it does fit. I just think, I just have a lot of concerns, especially after a lot of the tone, especially tonight, of the vagueness of, of the proposal. And I know, and I have faith, you know, you, it sounds like tonight you've specified that you're going to be doing a site visit, you're going to be following up on a lot of these questions. It just seems in my mind that there's still a lot of questions, and with my other neighbors, there's been a lot of just questions, like what, what really is going to happen, and it just keeps changing and moving, which I understand that's the process, and I'm glad I'm witnessing the process, I don't want to, I don't want to hinder that at all, but I, I want to encourage the board to really take a good look, especially from the people on Sawmill Road, to maybe even when you're out there, drive on Sawmill Road, you know, and just take a look, just take a look how close everything is, and I know you'll obviously see that once you're out there from the applicant's side of the property, but it's just very close and everyone has concerns with the ability to make some sort of a buffer. And a fence is one thing, and sort of the problem with fences is that with a fence, people go right up to the fence with whatever they're doing, and that tends to be the pattern with, with fences, you know, what's, what's two feet on the other side of the fence is unseen by the neighbors but a lot of times heard, and it's just a concern. I thoroughly encourage you all to work together, I think if, if he scales what he's looking to do and it sticks to that, I think it can be, it can work. I just have some concerns over whether that's going to be tightened up enough. I'm really glad to hear that you want to tighten down the sawmilling or the milling operation to a certain smaller amount of time. You know, it's one thing to say that it's just as loud as a lawnmower, and I appreciate that, a lawnmower doesn't run for three hours, and I'm getting the sense that you're trying to convince the applicant that, you know, you're trying to liken it to someone cutting their grass, which, great, everyone's got to cut their grass, even on Saturdays. So I'm just, I guess I'm just saying I'm going to be encouraged to see what the next meeting brings, and I hope that a little more detail is brought to the table and, so I guess we're 50% there or something like that. Thank you. And that's it.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Sure. When you refer to a buffer, what do you, tell us more, what are you, what are you thinking of?
Well, you, I believe you're the, the member that said that you're not 100% familiar with the site.
I actually went over there today, I'm a little more familiar.
Okay, a little more familiar, but, but someone mentioned that without being out there and seeing where all these things, there's just a heck, not a heck of a lot of room.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, you know, when you're back there, you're talking about, I don't know the exact distance, but there isn't a large gap between the homes, my neighbor Paul sitting on his deck, who's recently retired, you know, trying to just enjoy his deck and the applicant's operation. And I don't know what the buffer can be because you've got mature trees and you're going and you're going to maybe have a wooden fence. I would just hope that there'd be a lot of thought put into, how can we make this as detrimental, as non-detrimental as possible to the neighbors that are right there? And I guess that's a question that the applicant can work with the neighbors with and have just a, hey, what would you like to see? You know, I don't live directly there. I'm just kind of speaking for them, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm good?
Thank you for your comments. Much appreciated. Anybody else in the room want to address the commission? All right, seeing none, I'll open it up to Zoom. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to address the commission on this application? Okay, hearing none.
All right. I believe that we've had a good amount of discussion tonight, and my recommendation, which would require your agreement, would be for us to continue the meeting one last time and arrange for a site visit, if you're agreeable to that. And we can talk about what's to be included in the site visit. I do want to hear the sawmill running. And then the rest of it would just be a general walk-around so the commission could actually, now that we have this new plan, spot these areas on the site.
Yeah, distances around there to the property border, then of course the home from that property border is about 200 feet. If you have a calibrated DB meter, you can go to the neighbor's yard.
Yep.
They can measure it at their yard, at their property.
And I do believe that a lot of, I loved the public comment regarding to, you know, the comment around mowing the lawn. I think all of us who have neighbors who mow their lawns, I mow my lawn, my neighbors have to hear me doing it. There's an expectation that when that starts, there's a duration, and it's tolerable, and you, you know, you deal with it, and it ends. I think the goal here is just that.
To make it that.
That's right, to make it tolerable for everybody. Give you a window in which to do it, but define start and stop time when you do start it, so that everybody, when the mill starts, they can, your neighbor who, somebody commented, is on his retired guy on his deck, he can decide to go in and watch the game for an hour, and he can come back out. You know, and that would be, like, be his choice, but not to have to stay in for all seven hours, I believe, is a reasonable expectation we're looking for. And I would ask that, after receiving the feedback from the commission as you go to work with Abby on the next round, that come to the office, meet with Abby, have a two-way discussion, rather than when you see a proposed criteria for the special permit, if you disagree with it, an answer of no doesn't solve the problem. Sit with Abby, reach resolution so that you can sell that bagged firewood, and you can run the mill for a period of time. Work together, come back to us with a proposal that works for you, works for us, and then the next meeting, I can assure you, will go swimmingly if there's nothing left to talk about.
Understood.
All right? The goal, the goal is, we wouldn't be sitting here today if the goal wasn't to get you an approved permit. So we're looking to do that. Just work with us to get you there.
Understood. And then on the, on the site visit, you know, as the cleanup continues, you want to, timing-wise?
Well, timing-wise, we want to get you in for the next meeting. So there's two weeks. Well, we would want to get the site visit in soonish, like next week it'll be.
Yeah, so the next regular meeting is April 9. So for a site visit, we're looking at somewhere from Monday, the 1st, to Thursday, April 4.
And.
Well, if it's the next meeting is.
Yeah, yeah. The next meeting is 4/9. So for those of us working crew. Who have worked in Hartford, it would be very, you know, for the site visit to occur as late in the day as possible. I could do it Monday. Commission, any comment?
I'm going to have to be in Baltimore visiting my grandchild, which is born next week. So I'm.
Yeah, I can't do Monday either. I'm out of town.
How about the next Monday? We have two Mondays to work with, right, Abby?
I have a meeting Monday, the 8th at 7:00.
Okay.
So I would have to do prior to 7:00.
Okay.
Well, I think you're going to want it to be daylight hours anyway.
Yeah, you don't have to light west of late. 5:30 is still light.
Yes, and that would give me time to get home from work.
And you could do that on the 8th, because you'll be back.
Yeah, I'll be back.
Better shape.
April 8th at.
Two.
Is that real pretty?
5:30 might be better.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah.
It's even better for me.
Yeah.
How's the 8th look for you?
Yeah, I think it's okay.
It is okay?
Yeah, I think 5:30 would be fine.
Five, or 4/8, so April 8th at 5:30. And I would again encourage you to have as many of the conditions or questions ironed out before that. So what you're, what we're seeing is the fine.
What's it going to be like?
What it's going to be.
Yeah, we'll try to move stuff around as well, so it kind of emulates the.
That gives you more time to, yeah, move stuff around.
Definitely can emulate kind of the display area, kind of see if you think it's walking.
And sawmill, not just on, but actually sawing a piece of wood. The sound level changes when.
I would be happy with on, but if the applicant wants to want a piece of wood through it.
I think it's going to sound different.
You know, setting it up for sawing may be.
Yeah, it should be, that should be fine.
Okay.
It's not a big deal.
All right, then.
And then you'll have the DB meter at the neighbor's house, or we'll talk to Abby how to set it up.
Talk.
Usually it's at the property.
At the property.
Oh, okay.
Not the neighbor's.
I got you, the fence line. Okay. So we'll put it where the proposed, like, area, work area is. I'll go from there.
Okay. Any other, anything for us? Okay. Anything left for the commission?
I can reach back out to my neighbors. Then my one neighbor didn't respond.
Okay.
So hopefully you can get in touch with me.
All right, so we're on agreement to continue, and we will see you on the 8th, and we'll talk about this again on the 9th.
Okay.
Okay?
And I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I know that the second item was withdrawn or postponed.
It's postponed to April 9.
Okay. And I see we have an application to receive, Abby?
Yes, we have one application seeking modification to a special permit for smoldering repair services with outside storage for 369 North Granby Road. So the commission approved this a year or two years ago, and they've since expanded their area a little bit. They've been working with the Wetlands Commission. They recently did receive approval through Wetlands, so now they are submitting modification to this permission.
For more storage, basically.
For more local houses.
We can discuss during the public hearing.
All righty then.
So we have, we do have one other public hearing for the 9th, as well as a continuation of this for Station 280. They are coming in for two signs. But I would recommend also adding this to the agenda for that meeting to just get it started.
Okay.
Is 369, like, across from the funeral home?
No.
No, this is across from.
Casa.
The library. The library, Casa Library.
Oh, okay, so it's much farther.
189.
The old Chevy station, for those of us who've been.
It's the place, yeah.
Okay. No, all right, I know what you mean.
Place with all the stuff.
No, I was going to, the guy across from the funeral home fixed my lawnmower and a chainsaw, so I wanted to make a disclosure.
That's a different guy.
We all use the different services in town, so.
All right, we have no applications to consider for tonight. So moving on to staff, report and correspondence.
Nothing to report.
Anything from commission?
I attended by video the meeting of the Capitol area, what's the full acronym?
CROG.
CROG.
As it counts.
Yes. And they had a request for pictures from various towns, and Granby was on the list. So I sent that in an email. If somebody has access to some historic pictures of Granby, Granby people, Granby landmarks, they would appreciate that. Beyond that, they have April 8th, I think, is the vote that they're having on, or is the deadline submit post-changes on their plan, which they've apparently been working with for years. So it's out there.
Anything else to report? Okay. I guess this is the part where we call for an adjournment.
Some vote.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ding a adjourn. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.